Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, April 29th Committee, the whole meeting for the Village of Westmont into session at this time. Would the clerk please take the roll call?
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
What?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker.
Here.
Finance Director Von Baga.
Thank you. Please join us in the Budget Allegiance.
The Budget Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda in the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held April 15th and board meeting held April 19th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported? Hearing none, moving right along. Open forum. We have one request under open forum this evening from Bob Mueller at 44 West 59th Street, Apartments D., Westmont.
Good evening. I don't know if any of you saw the news last night, Deb Mel announced her engagement on the House floor of the Illinois State House. I think that was really a courageous act. It was a very demonstrative act because she and her partner are now going to go to Iowa in the fall and get married. It's pretty neat, except when they cross the state line back to Illinois, they're not married anymore. I think we've talked about the issue many times and basically in Illinois, we're just talking about civil unions because actually that's what everybody should have is a civil union. I think we should all congratulate Deb Mel. We should thank her for her courage and thank her for pointing out that we have a problem in this country. Now to get to the subject I really wanted to talk about, which was racial profiling. Obviously another subject in the news. We've all seen what happened in Arizona. I live down on 59th Street and basically I think we're very well-served by our immigrants here in Westmont. I think they do an exceptional job, just love their stores, love the service. And I think we should be appreciative of our immigrants, be very careful about racial profiling, especially as Arizona is going overboard. And I see a couple of people may have been at the Cubs game today. I don't know. There was a demonstration out there because Arizona Diamondbacks are actually in town. But basically on Saturday is the Big Immigrant Rights March and I hope everybody supports it, realizes why it's necessary that they too have to be marching in this country and ask for fair treatment. So I just want to make sure that everybody really considers looking at racial profiling as a problem and we don't want to just characterize a group of people just because they look Hispanic. We know it's a problem. It's been a problem for a long time. It's not going to go away very soon. So we all have to be very reasonable and very reasoned in our approach. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the only request under open forum. Reports on the agenda shows a recognition of life-saving efforts by the Westmont Police and Fire Departments. That presentation will be given on Monday, Monday evening's meeting. I have nothing further at this time. Moving right along, our village clerk.
First of all, under the Number Four proclamation, that should be for Saturday, May 15th instead And then I just want to remind everybody out there one more time, the census is due. If it's just sitting on your desk, please just fill it out and stick it in the mail. If you don't get it in the mail and they knock on your door, please be respectful and answer their questions because that's going to happen if you haven't mailed it in. So please, you have time, mail it in tomorrow. That's all. Thank you.
For every person counted, that's additional revenue that the Village of Westmont will be receiving from the state for the next 10 years. Thank you. Next, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Village Manager Ron Searle.
Thank you. I had several things I would like an executive session following the meeting for personnel. Passed out a supplemental purchase order list that contains three open purchase orders. We typically do this at the beginning of the fiscal year. These are purchase orders with the Public Works Department. We used to have very long lists, but through a change in our purchasing procedures, a number of years ago, we've been able to get that list of open purchase orders at the beginning of the fiscal year down to what you see today. So we would ask permission to add that to the agenda for Monday. Passed out a contract that Chief Trout, Fire Chief Trout provided to me for the Andres Medical Billing. Recall during the budget workshop discussions, I think the Fire Department presented the fact that they negotiated a discount with that contract. I think it's a 2% discount from 7% to 5%. So we'd like to move forward and add that to the agenda if the board is okay with that for Monday so that we can begin seeing that change. Then passed out an email from the Chamber of Commerce regarding the Celebrate Downtown Westmont event. Barbara Latzel's here to represent them, but they had two requests. One is approval to put a promotional banner at Burlington and Cass Avenue. And then the other is an approval to have live entertainment at local businesses on Friday, May 14th between 4:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. and Saturday between 10:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. So I don't know Barb if you want to address the board, but that was a request that we got after the agenda had already been finalized. So I told the chamber that we would bring it up for reports.
10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. maybe?
It says 10:00 Saturday. Yeah, I bet you're right. It should be 10:00.
That's an overnight concert, huh?
It's gonna be one party.
I'll vote on it. That's fine, go for it.
Nice party.
Rock it.
You don't want to think that.
Did Barb want to come up?
I don't know. 10:00 a.m. Unless there's questions.
Sounds like a great event. This event, like so many others, is beginning to really grow. So you guys do a great job. We're all looking forward to it.
So we'll add those two items to the agenda for Monday. And then the last thing I had was to ask Chief Frank Trout to come to the podium. He had a couple of public service announcements that he wanted to make on behalf of the Fire Department.
Thank you, Ron. The Fire Department has initiated a couple of programs, one dealing with smoke detectors that we were able to get through a grant, smoke detectors and batteries, and which Deputy Chief Weiss, in his expertise, got us yet another grant and we're going to talk about that. And then also, a few weeks back, in a neighboring suburb hometown, they had a firefighter which was killed in a fire. And one of the things that led to that incident being so intense was the fact that they had oxygen in the home. And so we've come up with a program in which we're alerting our residents and asking them to cooperate with us. Dave?
Thanks, Chief. The first program that's going to go on the cable system this next Monday is the smoke detector program. We have 65 smoke detectors available to hand out to residents in the village at no charge free if they can't afford to purchase them on their own and that they currently do not have an installed smoke detector. The smoke detector program is funded through the grant from the First Alert and Energize Batteries. These smoke detectors are for single-family residents only and those that can't afford them. Starting Monday on our cable channel, this message will be on there and for more information on receiving a free smoke detector, you need to contact the Westmont Fire Department and our number will be on there. And smoke detectors are going to be given to residents residing in single-family dwellings who do not have a smoke detector present already. Landlords, managers are responsible for smoke detectors in any multifamily dwellings. What will happen is the residents will call in starting Monday. We will take their name and address and someone from the Fire Department will come to their residence, will ask permission to be invited in, and we will do a fire safety check in their home to tell them where the detector should be the best place to install. If they're a senior citizen and are unable to install it, the Fire Department will install it for them. The second program, because of the multiple incidences that we're having with medical oxygen, and if you don't remember about a year ago up on Cass Court, we had that explosion where we had a fatality and that was due to the medical oxygen tanks. And we just lost a fellow firefighter in Homewood a few weeks back. So the Fire Department is going to be aggressive with this and we want to take care of our residents and our firefighters. So we would like residents to be aware of the dangers of home oxygen use. Oxygen is not flammable, but it still causes other materials that burn to a night more easily and to burn far more rapidly. And it acts like and appears like an explosive-like material. What we want residents to do, and this one in effect today, I believe on the cable because we received several phone calls from residents, is we're concerned about the resident's safety along with our emergency responders' safety within the village. And in an effort to ensure safety, we're asking residents currently utilizing home medical oxygen to notify the Westmont Fire Department. The information that we receive from them will be kept confidential and will be available to our emergency dispatchers in the event of an emergency in their home. This will allow first responders to use extra precautions responding to emergency situations in their home. So if residents currently in Westmont use home oxygen, please notify the Westmont Fire Department to provide your name and address. And we appreciate your cooperation with the request and thank you for making Westmont a fire-safe community. So those are the two programs, one in effect today, one next Monday, and we're taking a proactive stance with that so make the community much safer.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that Barb Latzel has some other individuals back with you that are, shall we say, rather nicely decorated this evening. Is there some kind of a presentation that you would like to give at this time regarding individuals?
Hello, I'm John Costle with Uncle John's Music in Downtown Westmont and I'm the chairman of the Celebrate Westmont event. So I just wanted to introduce this. And as our portion of the event, we are hosting several live bands, music behind our store. There's a lot behind the store. And they're all local bands of Westmont or at least some of the members from Westmont. So we're calling it Westmont Palooza. And it also is a hot dog party featuring free hot dogs. So it's just a fun event to hopefully draw new people to Downtown Westmont and eventually become customers. That's the idea. So I'm going to hand it over to Barb now, who's going to tell you a little more about it.
I've got Bob here trying to get up a graphic for you. Hopefully they'll come up in just a minute here. The Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau and the DWBA is here this evening to brief the village on the upcoming third annual Celebrate Downtown Westmont, Friday 14th from 5:00 to 9:00, Saturday, May 15th from 10:00 a.m., I'm sorry, to 6:00 p.m. And we're having all kinds of fun and the theme for all the businesses are Pirates. We have a couple of sponsors that are already really stepping up to the plate, Burton at Beef Free Studio and the Knights of Columbus and a couple other places and restaurants. But we have over 20 businesses participating. And we're going to be having all kinds of specials, promotions, live entertainment. And some of the specials here, I'm going to let Bob and Diane from La Petite Suites talk about. And if I could introduce them now, and if I had known there would have been Pirates here tonight, I would not have worn gold.
There you go.
Just in time.
Okay, Bob. So this would be the third annual Celebrate Downtown Westmont Festival.
Yeah, that's right.
And we thought it would be fun. They have a pirate ship sail into town. There's a picture of the ship on here. There you go. I'm not, what is it, 22 feet, something like that?
It's a 22-foot-long replica of a pirate ship that is kind of a loose replica. It's something that we've used as our group for in camp when we do medieval reenactments. I want to take you back just a couple of slides first. We belong to a group called the Society for Creative Anachronism, which has got 19 kingdoms, 19 major groups across the world with 30,000 people that are reenactors. So it started back in the '70s and what they do is they recreate life in the 17th century and before. Our group in particular is based out of the Northbrook area. We're the thieves of heart by day and at night we go as the Pirates of the Ridden Moon. The ship is the Ridden Moon and this comes with us to a lot of the different events that we do. We've actually hosted weddings with it and other parties as well, but it just sits in camp and it's sort of the main meeting place for the group. Part of what we would like to do is have the ship sitting between us at La Petite Suite and the Knights of Columbus. And that way it will be right up at the street front, starting the night before, and draw some attention as people drive by. It will let people know something's going on in town. Then on Friday, a lot of our group is going to be coming down to actually mill about the streets, walk into some of the businesses, play around a little bit with some of the townspeople, invite them back over to the Knights of Columbus that night for a little bit of an after-party. The Knights is going to be open. We talked to Rick over there and they're open to actually hosting a little bit of a party. We would be supplying some desserts for it. In addition to that, a couple of our members of our group actually do fire spinning and fire breathing. And in the area back behind where the ship is, we could actually rope that off and we'd be able to do a little bit of a fire show back there for the people. So it'll definitely be something special. It's very safely done.
These are all trained people. They know what they're doing. There are spotters that have the equipment in case of any mishap, but these guys have been doing this for many, many, many years. We've talked to the Fire Department about it and they will be on hand to make sure that all is well. We'll keep it contained. But with fire breathers and there's poi balls that they light on fire and like a fan dancer type, it's fans that, and it's just, we'll have some drummers that have medieval, actual period drums that they'll do some playing and it ought to be.
This is going to be fun.
It ought to be interesting.
So part of the idea was we were.
So you all have to learn how to say "r."
We were going to put up cards for the different businesses that they could actually invite people to the after-party for that night. Come over to the Ridden Moon or to the Knights of Columbus and be there for the party. And the business owners could come down as well and mingle with the people from the town.
But more importantly, we want the people in the Village of Westmont to come out, enjoy this festival. There's going to be a lot of things for kids. We're going to have the little treasure map. They can go to some of the businesses on the map. Maybe those businesses will have like a little coin, a little plastic coin or a chocolate something that the kids could collect, something that's affordable but fun for the kids. We're going to do a photo booth. You know, you go to these western towns, you could dress up. We're going to have some garb. People can put it on, we'll set them up by the ship, take their photograph, and they can dress as, you know, put it up next to their Johnny Depp photos. If we were talking about like a hair braiding thing for the little kids.
This is going to be fun.
A lot of different things have been in the works to actually make this fun.
So this is kind of like a presentation that you've given many, many times before, follow along those same, all those same lines. Sounds very, very interesting. Now for someone who might be watching this and wants to get it on their calendar, why don't you give the times and the dates again so they can make sure that they?
May 14th.
Ten.
Friday, May 14th.
Okay.
6:00 to 9:00. And then there will be a Pirates Ball. The Knights of, like I said, the Knights of Columbus, there will be a ball. Saturday, it goes from 10:00 to 6:00 on the streets of Downtown Westmont.
And you'll be giving demonstrations on Saturday also?
Saturday we'll be doing the photo booth. We wouldn't want to be doing, spinning a fire.
You can't spin fire during the day.
Okay, okay, very good.
Pirates will be around walking the streets a little bit and chit-chatting with the kids.
Okay.
We're going to do a map again this year, including all the businesses. So once you visit all 24, 25 businesses with your treasure map, you would turn that in and be eligible for a downtown shopping spree. And so far we have about $500 worth of gift certificates that you can win to apply restaurants and businesses in downtown.
It'll be fun.
And how are you going to promote this and how can the village also help to promote it?
Well, we're hoping, Mayor, that you'll come up and down Cass Avenue at rush hour with a placard and.
No, no, no. We've got to let people know ahead of time so they get it on their calendar.
Wouldn't that be a nice thing? The answer's going in the report of progress. We'd like for, you know, Bob can do his pirate commercial and it can run on cable.
That would be great.
We need, yeah, we, Bob would do it, not me. You know what? We need to get the people out.
But advertising, we're getting signs out there. It'll be in the newspaper.
And of course the banner that you're going to hang.
Banner, okay.
And we've got a website.
Celebrate Downtown Westmont.
I'm going to get into this.
And when the ship comes, I mean, I was tempted to have the ship come on Wednesday. As people were driving by, they're going to look at this thing and go, what? You know? So maybe it'll spark a little bit of interest. They'll look and we're going to have some big signs in our window that say something to the effect of, "Are you ready?"
Okay.
So we'll see what happens. I'd like to see 1,000 people show up, but even if I have to go drag them out myself.
Very good. Very good. Any comments from board members?
Sounds like a lot of fun.
The only question I have, I'm trying to picture how large the ship is. When you bring it in, how is it going to happen with traffic down Cass Avenue? How does that work?
Actually, it comes in a small trailer that unpacks in four pieces.
And then you build it?
Four guys take this thing and they just slide it together.
Okay.
We have actually brought it out to a field where we do fencing demonstrations. We brought it out to a field and then found out it had to be moved after it was set up. And we picked it up, walked it about 100 feet over to the real resting spot, set it back down.
It also can go through the back entrance from the alley, so it will not affect traffic at all. We're going to try and figure out horses or whatever, something to contain horses that will drive into the ship.
Real horses?
You know, if you've got a horse, feel free to bring it. They allow it. You know, most pirates run on foot or on ship. So it's going to be far enough off the street that.
It's going to be cool.
You know, it doesn't, it will not disrupt anything. Just get people.
Visual.
Barb, I got a question for you.
It'd be great.
To get it really going, is there any way you'd be able to get to Manning School, Miller, the junior high and high school, and get it put out, throughout the, maybe some flyer or something? Get the kids kind of.
I have a little pirate wench at Manning School. She would walk in there and she would go, "Rr."
Yeah, that's a good idea.
But she has garb. She could dress up and wander through the school.
You know, that way the kids go home, snag the parents and say, here we go. Because the kids love this stuff.
Yeah.
And I think that the businesses, I mean, we've tried to get the businesses excited about it. It's a little bit different. There are, there's a town up in Wisconsin that has a Pirate Festival, very, very, very family-friendly, and there are thousands of people that show up to this thing. It's a two-day event. And the kids have a ball. They have, you know, they have big treasure chests that kids go digging through for booty. They have, you know, like, you know, contests, little jousting contests and things of that sort. The kids just like it. And then you've got the adult thing and.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
It'll be fun.
What would be the requirements to get something into the school? I ran a roller rink for 18 years and every school district seemed to have its own requirements on what you can and cannot put through and who you can get it in there with.
I would have to go, I would have to, I would have to say, Trustee Forsley could probably answer that one better than me.
Thank you. It just has to be approved by the superintendent.
Okay.
And then once he approves it, then just go, you know, they'll let the other schools know and you just drop it off the school. But it has to be approved by, I should say.
And you have for 18 years to be happy to do that.
I don't know if it has to go through the board or not. I can't remember. I know, but I know it has to definitely start with the superintendent.
Would it be an option that if we did up a flyer, a handout that the kids could take home, you know, would that be an acceptable option? Because we've got, I mean, we could print.
Well, it would be. A flyer that we drop to the schools and.
If we know how many we need, Bob and I will handle printing that flyer.
I know that we have a standing somewhat agreement with Park District because we've given things out through the Park District through our school. So like I said, all I'm aware of is it goes through the main office and then it filters down to us. So that would be the first place to start. Call first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I would say probably Larry Forsberg might be able to call, Larry Forsberg might be able to call over there in the morning and get ahold of him and say, hey, look, you know, we got this. What do you think? I wouldn't think they would say, oh.
And don't forget, we have Southside Schools too, Marker.
Yep, Marker and the ones west of your hills.
And I would imagine that's probably very similar to get it.
And they belong to the chamber too.
I would think every school should be, if we're going to do one, we should do them all.
But Larry knows the superintendent, so.
Okay.
Yeah, great. And don't forget to drop some off at Holy Trinity too. Yeah, absolutely. At the school there. Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
What's there to do? You ain't great.
It's going to be fun.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing all that information in, matey.
We were going to rename the moon spread.
Nice outfit. Can I borrow that for Halloween next year?
No, this week. I like the bag. I like the bag.
Thank you.
It's just a Liberty Tax we can put in Mayor's bill.
Moving right along.
Our own waiver.
2010 Taste of Westmont Public Street. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We're not done.
It's okay, we don't have anything to say. Go ahead.
Trustee Scott.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Trustee Klebenow.
A couple of items. First of all, Monday at 6:30, we have a Public Information Committee meeting right here in the boardroom. And I believe everybody has been passed out the agenda and it's, we were thinking of postponing it because of the finance, but one of the things in here is with the downtown, the Celebrate Downtown, and I couldn't, I looked at the calendar and I couldn't get it in. So I said, we're going on with it. We want to get these people and other, there's a whole bunch of stuff, events coming up. Also, I want to remind the people, May is around the corner and we do have our electronic recycling that's going to start on Friday, May 14th, I believe. And the time again to remind people, it's now 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So you can have time before you go to work to get your rec. So you can have time before you go to work to get your recycling in. It's at the southeast corner of Blackhawk Drive and Plaza Drive. And I know Jenny mentioned it, and I wanna add to it that the census forms needed to be in May first, this coming, what, two days? And the census people are getting ready. Are we alone, are they gonna be using, I know we got an email about the...
They're gonna be training at the Wisconsin.
Okay, so they're gonna be starting, they're training, and it'll be hitting the streets soon afterwards, so please get your census forms in because they are going to be in our town by next week for training. And that's all I have, thank you.
Several of us were contacted by a resident that just came back from Florida, winters in Florida, and did not receive the form. Is there, how do they go about getting the form?
They should have forms, Larry, where, at the different areas, they could pick 'em up.
I checked into that today, and they're gonna be supplying us with an eight-hundred number, and you can actually take care of your census information by calling in. So I'm gonna promote that information starting Monday.
So they'll actually do it on the telephone?
That's what I was told today.
Wow, okay.
What about the, there were some locations where you could go and...
Yeah, we have some locations.
Can you mention those locations?
Yeah, I'm not sure, you're talking about the information centers?
Right.
I believe those are all winding down right now.
Closing.
Oh, okay. I didn't even see them up. But no, and you can get the information too, some information even on, on the website, I'm sure.
Right. Yeah, on Monday, I plan to release a new, up-to-date press release with the eight-hundred number, and also, once again, just reiterating Jenny's message of make sure you're cooperative with your census takers when it comes to doors.
What happens after May first?
Knock on doors.
They're gonna be knocking on doors, yeah. Some areas have already had people out, but I think it's mostly been in the very dense, like apartment areas and stuff. I know my son-in-law is working for him, my sister works for him now, and it's only gonna be a matter, they're only expected to be out a few weeks, they expect to, you know, knock it out, but just be polite about it, I mean, don't kill the messenger, they're out there like anybody else with a job, trying to get the information, so hopefully, everybody will be cooperative and, and be pleasant to them, they're nice folks.
If we could find out the eight-hundred number before Monday's meeting, you could...
They could probably go on the website if we can, not at the website, I mean, on our TV, can we put on the, even the TV, our program, Channel Six?
Sure.
If we can get that number, we can even put on Channel Six, so we can try to get it out as soon as possible.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
A couple of things. One is, the junior high is starting a summer reading program, literacy program, and it's gonna be annual at Barnes and Noble Reading Night, and it is Thursday, May sixth, so it's next week, next Thursday, a week from today, from six o'clock to eight o'clock in Barnes and Noble in Oakbrook. And what they're trying to do is have a kickoff summer reading, the students are gonna have books that they have to purchase and read over the summer. And to kick it off, we have, the jazz band will be playing there, the swing choir, and we have guest appearances by, excuse me, Marcella Raymond of WGN News, our principal will be there, and our own Chief of Police, Tom Mulhern, will be reading, I understand.
Yes, sir.
He'll be one of the readers. So if anybody would like to go and read, an invitation to all the trustees, I was asked to, to share, if you'd like to read, I know they would enjoy having any of you to be there to read. And then apparently, a percentage of the Barnes and Noble purchases will be brought back to the school, I'm not sure what the percent is, but brought back to the school and the end, it's gonna be used specifically to buy books, to purchase books. So we're excited about it and hopefully get everybody, a lot of people there. And the second thing I have is, we have an admin, Administration and Finance Committee meeting on Monday, May third, as Trustee Clevinow had alluded to, and ours starts at six o'clock in the conference room, so we have the meeting at six. And then I will mention on the census, I got a phone call today, you know how easy you said that census form was, well, I messed it up. But it's, it, what I learned today, well, it, it's kinda confusing in the sense, because if you have a child in college, it says, "Don't include them." But then later on, there's a form where you put the names in, and if you, you put the name in, and it says, "Is this person in college?" So it's kinda, so I said, you know, I answered it the way they said, "Three," and then I put down that he was in college, and I got the phone call, and we learned, or I learned, that a, he will not be counted for Westmont, even though he graduates tomorrow, or Saturday, he'll be moving back to Westmont. As of April first, he's been, majority of the time has been in, in Michigan, so he'll be counted for the town he's in right now, even though he won't be living there after next week.
Nice for all the college towns.
Yes, yes.
They're gonna get everything, aren't they?
So I just found that out today, so, and I asked, "Is there any way?" And they said, "No," because April first is that cutoff deadline, you have to be living in the community. So anyway, informational to everybody.
But just keep him in your house for ten more years and you can count him.
There you go. There you go. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Emery.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just wanted to let everyone know, there will be an Economic Development Committee meeting Wednesday, May fifth, at nine o'clock here at Village Hall. Also, I wanted to congratulate the Chamber and everybody that worked so hard on the progressive dinner this week, it was a lot of fun. It was just great to see all of the businesses involved and the restaurants, the food was fabulous. And then, the last thing is, last night, the Rotary had their reverse raffle, and, you know, they do so many good things, as all of our service organizations do, but the thing that really, you know, kinda hit me last night is that all of the, all of our nonprofit groups really just greatly support each other. It was just wonderful to see Lions there and Knights there and, you know, people from DWBA and people from the Chamber, and, and it's not just the Rotary they attend, you know, you see 'em at the Knights' function, you see 'em at the Lions' function, so it was really a good, solid community event, and the money comes right back to Westmont. So it was just, it was fabulous, and I just wanted to say thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. First item, two thousand and ten Taste of Westmont Public Street Closure Plan. Board to consider approving a Westmont Special Events Corporation Traffic Management Plan for the two thousand and ten Taste of Westmont Event, July eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Always the weekend after the Fourth of July.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Fine.
As you know, we were up here, what, about a month ago?
I'm gonna give everybody your name so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I am, I'm Bob Mackert.
And I'm Linda Sivakka.
And we represent Westmont Special Events.
Thank you.
Who puts on the Taste of Westmont. And as you know, about a month ago, we came up to the board in regards to the Taste, as far as expanding our carnival area this year, basically taking it, kinda turning on Irving Street, heading towards the Methodist Church parking lot up to Lincoln Street. This gives you kind of an idea of the layout that we are proposing to do, so you kinda see, and I know some of those ride names are kinda hard to see, but the yellows represent, the yellow squares represent the rides, and of course, where the different areas of the carnival will be, like the food booth and the, you know, those little booths that they have too. Our proposal is to basically, like I had mentioned, go into the Methodist Church parking lots. In addition to that, what we'd like to also is the slide, we wanna put on the, on the Irving Street West between the alley and Lincoln, which is something we didn't mention last time we were here, so a change we'd like to make this time around. We also would like permission to have the tune, use the, be able to get into the tune lot and the Methodist Church parking lot on Wednesday at seven o'clock, went the seventh, to basically, so we can start carnival, we can start building those carnival rides at that time, a little earlier than, so that we can be ready to be open for Thursday at about four o'clock.
We're gonna offer, it's gonna be fifty dollars for spans.
And, yeah, go ahead, Linda, if you wanna speak, go ahead.
No, we're gonna offer people, we're calling ours Taste of Westmont Kids of Palooza, which is almost close to what they're calling theirs Business Palooza or whatever, and we're offering wristbands at a discount of fifteen dollars for four hours from six to ten Thursday night. It'll be in the progress next week? Hopefully, we'll be, start advertising in the next few weeks after we've been approved. And then also, the trade-off, I'm not sure you mentioned that.
No, but if, for some reason, the Methodist parking lot, during the Taste, if for some reason, the Methodist parking lot isn't working, we would then like to request if we could move back to the Burlington and Cass commuter lots. So let's say that Thursday and Friday, for some reason, we get a lot of complaints, or they're just not working out in that, in that Methodist lot, we disassemble the rides and move them back in, or move them into the, the Cass and Burlington lot, although the Cliff Hanger ride may not fit in there, but at least the bumper cars and whatever else we can get in there, we, we can fit in there, if we had to.
Anyone to tell them, tell them the letters?
Yeah. And also too, we had a letter this Saturday, Linda, Larry McIntyre.
Jenny.
Jenny and a few people, that's probably, went to residents' house from Burlington to Naperville Road on both Lincoln and Grant Streets, and delivered the letter. I think you talked to a lot of residents, if I'm not mistaken.
All of us did.
We knocked on every door.
Yeah. So I have not had any comments back, other than one comment from someone clarifying, they live on Lincoln Street, and they wanted to know how they get in and out of Lincoln Street during the event.
They'll be able to.
Which I think Steve May was CC'd on that email as well, so to clarify exactly to that resident, how they would be able to get in or out of their area.
Now, has the, is the Methodist Church, has it been decided where their people can park their cars, their commuters? I would think they could park them on Lincoln.
That was part of the request in regards to all this and...
The police department recommend that we just would not enforce parking in that area. Sometime in the time when the parking lot's occupied, we would probably tell the church or the WSCC could tell the people they could park in the residential area, we just would not enforce the four-hour parking during the Taste, or during those events only. If you'd ask, better than sending them to a direct area with permits or anything like that. It would just, those four days make it easier. If some other people park in there, so be it, but that'd be the easiest.
Yeah, it's just a few days.
A question, I'm going back to the parking, parking lot at Cass and Burlington. The plan right now is to have that parking lot open?
Correct.
For?
Residents to park, for the businesses to come down.
And are, were we gonna have any restrictions on who can, who can park there, or whoever?
Well, you know, we discussed that back and forth, and I believe, you know, I don't think we ever come to a conclusion of, of, of that kind of restriction. I know that they wanted to enforce a two-hour rule, or some, some various, you know, and when I say "they," of course, I mean the downtown businesses and stuff too, but we've not come up with a definitive at this time.
Signage or whatever.
So you're working with the police department on, on the parking situation for that parking lot?
Not so much the police department, but I was, the DWBA and the Chamber.
I thought, I thought the thing that was suggested was to the DWBA, as well as the Chamber, to have that lot be nothing but valet parking for that weekend.
That's what it sounded like.
I know that that was discussed.
Correct.
In great detail.
That was discussed, maybe also as well as allowing two-hour parking, I think we said, or signage.
No, because you, you have to be able to regulate what goes in that lot. You're not gonna be able to enforce a two-hour parking during the event. I, I can't see how you can possibly do that. There's, there's no way you're gonna be able to do it. I mean, even if you go by and say, "Chalk the tires," what are you gonna do, have a conveyance of tow trucks come in and pull those vehicles out of there? No. I say if you have valet parking and charge a rate in there, maybe it could go towards the Downtown Business Alliance Fund or whatever, or something, but make it to a point that if you wanna park there, it's gonna be premium parking, and it's, it's gonna cost. The other thing that I will say is...
What about the time limit, if it's valet?
If they pay for it, they can park there as long as they want. And I'm saying, set a rate of like twenty-five bucks to park in that lot, because if the event goes on, I mean, that would be premium parking. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know how you can possibly enforce two-hour parking. I just don't see how it's possible that you could do that.
Well, I think the, the business people are gonna, if they got someone that wants to come into their restaurant, or they have their hair done or whatever, that they're not gonna wanna pay that twenty-five dollars.
No, no. What you do is, the same thing that you do when you go downtown. If they are a patron and they park in that lot, they come in there, and that's what they've got, then they get a voucher from that particular business, allowing them to park in there. In other words, they stamp for your parking as you leave. So when they leave, then it's not charged. Or some way or another, contacting their clients ahead of time.
Aren't the businesses paying for the valet?
Huh?
Aren't the businesses paying for the valet?
Well, that was, that was my understanding. That's, that's what I thought had been, had been pretty well settled on, that that's what was gonna be done.
Yeah, maybe just check with the DWA and ask them where they are with it, because it was sort of in their hands at that point, if I recall.
Well, you are correct. We wanna be supportive of them, and we wanna, you know, however they wanna manage the lot, we will support that, and, you know, but I agree, it should be, it should come from them, not from us, how to manage the lot, if we're not gonna use the lot.
Yeah, if you're not using the lot, it's not up to you to say how it's gonna be used.
Yeah, I understand it's our event, and we wanna, you know, manage as much as possible, and, but, you know, the lot is...
Yeah, but the lot was the DW, the business owners.
I would say the ball's back in their court.
Right.
You know, get together with them, see how they wanna handle it, and then I'd let them take it from there.
Yeah, sure. All right.
Sounds, sounds good, so they, they will be in charge.
Maybe this far, not too soon.
All right.
Yeah, 'cause she would've hit some...
Anything else?
The WSCC is self-sufficient and would like to continue to be that way. We would appreciate your consideration for approval on Monday so that we would be able to meet our, our budget this year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions from board members?
It's gonna be here before you know it.
Yes, I know.
Tom. Our police chief, Tom Mulhern, is gonna read to us, there we go.
No, sir. Checking with Chief Crowden, Deputy Chief Weiss, until I saw the map here a few minutes ago, our agreement was, there was only gonna be carnival rides between the alleys, to the east and west alleys, and I see now, according to the one diagram.
Sure.
There's rides to the west of that alley, which basically, my concern, I'll let the fire department explain for that, but if you're putting a ride here, west of the alley, there's no way a fire truck, if anything happens here in the middle of the block, is only restricted to coming up from Burlington, or is gonna have to go all the way to Norfolk and travel back down south through the alley to get to anything in mid-block. I was only the impression that the alley was gonna remain open, which was very important for us, for access to the back, as well as, as well as Irving was. This is, first I'm seeing this tonight.
That's all I see.
And in talking with Deputy Chief Weiss, I believe with the way the rides are staggered, and I'll let the fire department address that, they have to be there so there's enough an emergency vehicle or emergency equipment can get down Cass Avenue, and I guess our concern would be here, is this, is this gonna be also wide enough, is there gonna be an access for an emergency vehicle here with that ride? I didn't see these until just this evening.
I, I can answer some of that a little bit. The, the ride that, that's being labeled here, Giant Slide, I think you're all familiar with that, and it's very tall, but it's also fairly narrow, so it definitely provides a ten-foot egress, which I talked with Doug Daniels about this, as I always do, and he said that there would definitely be passage through this, as well as on this side from, on Irving east of Cass, this is pretty much wide open right now. Tentatively, we got a communications van there, the truck typically goes there, plus the first day tent, these are things to be figured out, but this side, there's complete egress to get to Cass, and then, and then basically, there's definitely gonna be a ten-foot egress all the way through this. And so, so the only place where there's, where there's really not an egress is right here, it says, "Tilt-a-tilt," it's supposed to be tilt-a-whirl, I apologize, but that's the ride that's just east of the alley, right here, and we have had the street completely street completely blocked off with things in the past. We used to, for, when we used to have the Irving stage there, um, that used to, there used to be no egress there and it was always considered that that would be okay as long as you had complete egress coming from the east. Um, so that, that was my conversation with Doug Daniels, but I'll let you go ahead and, uh, go for them.
Yeah, the fire department doesn't have a problem with this.
Any other questions? Thank you for all your hard work and continued work and, do you have something else you wanted to say, Linda?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you all.
You're very welcome.
And thank you guys for all your support, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Always the weekend after the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Yep.
To business, downtown employee parking permits. Board to conduct a six-month review of the downtown employee parking permit program.
Back in October when the board approved the program, you asked to have a six-month review and in your packet is a summary from the deputy village clerk regarding the number of permits that have been taken out and an inventory of, um, which particular parking areas the permits have been issued for. And, um, I guess I would want to draw the board's attention to the last comment in his letter regarding the use of the parking on Quincy Street. Apparently, um, we have seen very little use of that and I don't know if that's something that we wanna revisit in terms of continuing to designate that for business parking. The deputy clerk points out that if we were to sell those spaces back to the commuters that we could achieve some pretty significant income.
Where are they parking?
Where are the permit holders parking?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they...
I mean, I know where some of them are, 'cause I see them.
Right.
In the lot. But...
You know, I, as he mentions in the memo, there are two to five vehicles on West Burlington and obviously there are many more permits that have been issued. And I, I don't know if the police department has had any kind of, uh, have you, Tom, been able to identify these permit parkers where they're not supposed to be? Do we know that?
Let me just interject that I've had a couple people come up to me at the train station that have B permits, which are for the ones on Burlington.
Yes.
And they're like, you know, "You moved us down a whole block and now those spaces are empty." And, you know, in inclement weather and all that, "It's a hassle for us, what are you guys doing?" So, although I explained it to them, I watch it when I get on the train and those spaces are empty. And they've all been moved west.
If they're not being used, maybe we could flip-flop it back the way it was and put the employee parking that's not being used where we have the commuters now.
Um, I did, I had a records department do research, uh, since, uh, this January this year, we've issued 22 time violations, um, in the downtown area. They do not break out whether they had parking permits or not. Um, we have only received, uh, three complaints. One was from the owner of the resale shop, who in the beginning inception of the program received two tickets. Um, she was, um, upset, concerned about the program. And, uh, we had only one employee come in, uh, I know that they paid a ticket, um, and mentioned he just moves his vehicle around, uh, rather than getting the permit, he just moves his vehicle around. So we don't know if it's, they're moving around and, you know, they come out in four hours, three hours, and 45 minutes they're coming out moving the cars. Our officers have been checking it daily, um, and the shifts, what they do now is, uh, rather than get out and chalking the tires, they get out with the, they, they'll activate their video camera, they'll videotape the parking lots on Cass Avenue, they'll come back after the time limit and compare the video at that time to see if the vehicle's been moved. So it also saves our officers a little bit of time and better enforcement efforts. But as far as the parking for employees, we have no way of tracking nor any information on that.
Trustee Emery, was, the area you're talking about is the free parking that we set up that displaced them, or are you talking about the stuff that's closer?
Well, you know, we have now all those spaces, like across from the, the street from the uptown, and we moved all of those commuters further down because we, you know, they used to be able to park very close to the train station. Now they can't. And now all those spaces sit empty. So they're asking why were we moved down for empty spaces that are not being used?
Essentially, we only have one permit that's issued for that area right now, and that's also the, the free area combined. So I mean, that, I guess that's the purpose of why you wanted to review this in six months was to look at how the program's being utilized.
Yeah, 'cause we...
If you wanna make any changes.
We set aside 15 spaces.
But did we relocate 15 commuters? Or are you saying we only relocated one? I'm confused.
Remember, they don't have specific spaces assigned?
They just have to, who gets there first gets it.
I mean, they can park anywhere in there, so they probably relocated somewhere.
Okay.
You know, within, wherever that permit allows them to.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
But of these, do you have, um, according to the letter, you had 21 people purchase to park in that area? It looks like, um, 20 of them did it for just the quarter, but one person did it for an entire year. Paid for an entire year. So you have people...
Looks to me like one, only one person did it for the quarter and all of us did it for the entire year.
Everybody else did. Sorry, am I reading it the opposite? Yeah. Okay. So there must be a lot of them.
I've seen the permits hanging in the Cass and Burlington lot. A lot of them are over in that lot.
Yep.
But I think, you know, based on the sales and on, you know, months of having the spaces available, both on Quincy and on Burlington, I think we need to, um, shorten them.
What's happening to the spaces on Quincy? Are they being utilized?
No.
Those aren't utilized?
Two to five vehicles, um, and Quincy, we had allotted, um, 17 spaces on Quincy.
Uh-oh, here comes Mr. May.
Here he comes.
Just to clarify, uh, out of all of the locations where they're allowed to park, the permit allows them to park in excess of the time limit. So the permit is to exceed the, the time limit. But they are mixed with all other users of the public parking lot, except on Burlington Avenue. That's the only place where we carved out that this is the only use that could be used there and that's where you're finding the difficulty. So if we removed that restriction, that one user would have to utilize one of the other shared spaces and it probably isn't, I, I will guess they are a West Burlington, you know, employee, that that's the preference to park there.
Yeah.
Or we not get way back to, you know, three or four or five or something.
Not get back down to three or four. Yeah. Because they, they, we decided to give them preference to, you know, have a successful downtown business parking, but if we certainly don't need 15 and there's only one car that's using it, why don't we not get back to three? So that all those people that are walking halfway to Fairview...
Won't have to.
At least only have to walk, you know, a third of the way to Fairview.
I guess if they paid to park in that area for a year and we cut out some of the spaces that they can park at, wouldn't that cause us a problem?
They're not using them.
They don't pay for an area, they pay for the permit, which allows them to park in any of those areas.
So we're saying if the area's not being used, we just...
Well, I realize that, but I mean, it, it's the option. I mean, I buy these cards these kids sell that tells me I can go into these restaurants and get 10% off, but it's up to me whether I use it. But if I, you know, go in and the restaurant that's on there doesn't honor it, I'd be angry.
But it doesn't say that that's where they can, you know, that's just one of the places that we allotted. They can park at any of the other places.
I just don't want 20 people who paid presuming that when they feel like that they can park there and just because they're not there, that we can turn around and, and let somebody else move in a spot they thought was reserved for them.
Pat, we have designated 32 spaces along the tracks and the lot at Burlington and Cass, which is how many spaces?
Yeah.
I mean, and we've only sold 20 permits.
Yeah, uh, but I'm, so you're gonna leave the 20 then?
The, the whole lot and the, based on usage, is that we don't, we only need a couple spots on Burlington. We don't need 15 and we don't need 17 on Quincy. The majority of the 20 permits are being used in the lot at Burlington and Cass, mixed in with two-hour townspeople shoppers. We don't need 32 spots along the track.
We don't need 32, but I would hate to get rid of less than 20 because there's people who paid presuming that when they feel up to parking in that spot, they're gonna be able to park in that spot. Now, maybe the next year, I mean, we can cut it to 20 if it's all we sold, and then the next people coming in, they're told they can mingle in between. But when we said we had 30 spots and they were gonna get those spots, and now we're gonna say, "Well, not everybody comes," so now, I mean...
It's not that everybody doesn't come, that they don't, we didn't sell, we have available probably 60, 70 spots. We've sold 20 permits, we don't need to...
I understand that. I'm just saying that if I bought a spot and I'm told I could park in this block because I paid for that block, I'm just saying that I would expect, whether it's once a year or five days out of the week, I expect that I should find a parking spot in that spot.
Well, I, I think, I think if we change it, if we make it three spots, which is probably more than we need...
Two more than we need.
We, we need to let the businesses know that the parking is, you know, changed, we have X number of spots. Because it's not being used, we've changed it. I mean, people are reasonable, I think, yeah.
If you, okay, but if you, if you look at this list right here, right now, I'll bet that on a daily basis, you can go through here and 90% of those people are parking in the Cass and Burlington lot.
Right, well, we know they are.
So whether or not we shorten up these spaces here...
Doesn't matter.
Or we shorten up the spaces over there, those people are not gonna park in these spots. They're choosing to take the shortest path, which is park in the Burlington and Cass lot, to walk right around the corner to Karma, walk around to Dr. Blaney's office, West Suburban Insurance, Westmont Pharmacy, right across the street. Now, personally, if I had a permit, I'd be out of my mind if I parked across from City Hall and walked all the way across the tracks if I worked up there, if I had the capability of parking in the Cass and Burlington lot. Alls we're saying is the revenue we could get off of these lots in front of Village Hall right here, right now, far outweighs what this is. Now, if, if we put, took these 17 spaces over here, let's say we cut that back to four. So that gives us 13 spaces that we can run out at how much?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars a month.
For, for, well, no, for three months.
Per quarter.
For a hundred a year.
So then on the far side, on the Burlington side, there's 15 spots. Let's say just out of that, let's back it down to five spaces. Now, how many spaces do we have in the Cass and Burlington lot?
And I want to make one point for the record for people who are watching. When we say Cass and Burlington, we mean the lot adjacent to the railroad tracks behind Harrelson's Garage and not the public lot, the, the bigger public lot at Cass and Burlington. We don't want...
But what I'm, what I'm saying though is, if you've got 20 permits, okay? There is no way that they're all parking in that little lot...
It's true.
Behind Harrelson's, okay?
Oh, they're, they're using all the locations available to them and one user is choosing this location on Burlington Avenue.
Okay.
Seemingly one user, I don't, I haven't been...
Well, the, the report says on any given day, there are two to five parked in the spaces on West Burlington Street and we don't, yeah, and we don't know how many are on Quincy, or does it say how many?
No, it's on Quincy and only one on Burlington.
Again, to remind our, our viewers, uh, these employee permits are not valid in the main Burlington and Cass parking lot immediately south of Amber Restaurant.
So if we kept five, so if we, if we kept it to five, we reduce it to, from 17 to five, 'cause it says on any given day, there's two to five. That still allows all five of those people and, and we review it again in two months.
Yeah, I had it backwards. It's one on Quincy, three to five on Burlington, so...
I'd like to also go look at the geometry and see if there's a logical place which would dictate the number of stalls, uh, you know, by Monday or, do you want it Monday or by Public Works Committee maybe in May?
But I ask, how many of them are parking in the actual lot next to Amber?
I see the per, I see the permits hanging in there.
Okay, where that was not part of the original thing.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying with this. They're not parking in the right spot.
If you look at the people who purchased the, uh, coupons...
Mm-hmm.
And I, going with a few, trustee Fleming, if you're at Karma, where would you park? I mean, you have three from Karma, where would you park? You're not gonna park down here.
Right.
You got Dr. Blaney, you got one, two, three, four, five, you're not gonna park down here. Most likely, you're not gonna park down here. Uh, in Kaplan Interiors, so I'm trying to see which ones would park at this...
Westmont Pharmacy.
Westmont Pharmacy would be the ones that...
Right on Burlington.
Right on Burlington, would most likely...
And Edward Jones.
Yeah, those are the only ones.
And Edward Jones.
Mm-hmm.
So if you cut it to five, you know, figuring that they're all not gonna be there at the same time, that might be, or cut it in half and something.
Yeah, cut it in half and then review it again in three, nine days, you know?
And if so, we still have a lot available, we'll cut it again.
Yep.
And if it's being filled, we're no...
With a little bit at a time, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. You can tell where they're, you can tell where they're gonna park.
Jenny, we have people on a waiting list, don't we? For commuter parking?
We used to.
Jenny, we have people on a waiting list for commuter parking, don't we?
Oh, yes.
So we could really use those.
I'm, I was unhappy with this from the get-go because we're losing so much money.
But for that end of it, we've got 60 spots at the west end that are never used.
In the meters?
Yeah, not even touching the meters. For one year, I went down there and I counted them every day and the average was 62 spots not used at the west end.
Well, now would you rather pay the $75 for three quarters and park closer to the train or do you wanna walk from the meters? I ask you.
Well, the object is if we have people that are waiting though, why aren't they parking down there if I, and the meter, or buying the, uh, permits, why aren't we selling them to them? And they're parking down there. Those lots should be filled.
You mean taking out, uh, taking out meters?
62 spots. If we have people waiting to buy a permit...
Can we do that?
Then the question is why are those empty spots...
And I don't think they're gonna buy permits for that far away. I really don't. Not when they can, they can park closer at the Methodist Church or the Lutheran Church, then go down to the...
So what do we have, what do we have, I guess the question is what do we have the waiting list on?
The, the, the three-month, $75 permits.
Right, but there's permits that are...
Location.
Is it only by location because there, is, do we have permits by location?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, when you get there, I mean, you...
A and B.
A and B, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe...
But B goes all the way down to the end?
It goes to the meters.
To the meters.
And that $75 all the way to the meters?
And those are all taken. I mean, those are all taken, somebody has them. We oversold.
But we've got 62 on an average day that no one ever uses. That's not our problem though.
Nope.
Are you saying...
But then at that same thing, oh, okay.
I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
I see what you're going...
So you're saying...
Pat's sitting there saying, "Well, we sold, left those areas are open."
But we even oversold those.
As far as I'm concerned, the lots are occupied, whether they're in there or not. They're paid for.
Are you asking?
Well, it's not reserved parking though. It's just areas of parking.
But it, what, but you have to look at the scenario then, what, the what-ifs. What if somebody paid for those lots and come in and every single one was taken? And they go, "Well, I, I paid for a whole year," presuming that they're reserving that spot.
I've had that happen on a extremely rare occasion, 'cause those lots are oversold, and I think it's only happened to me once or twice in the last 20 years where the lot was full. I parked in front of Village Hall and all I did was hang my permit up and when the officer saw the lot was full, he knew what I was doing. I did not get a ticket for it either time.
I guess how many, how many, we're oversold by, by how many though? I guess how many, how many, we're oversold by, by how many though?
We'd like to talk to you about that, Chief.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to, are we sold by five, ten, or are we sold by a hundred over?
We can get that information for Monday.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but we're pretty well over.
Because, because the extra ones towards the back end, towards the meters, the, they were told that they could park there free, correct?
It's near there.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, they didn't have to pay. The only thing they had to pay for were the close-up ones.
Yeah.
And then the ones that were further down.
Between Williams and Park, that's designated, they could park there for free.
Just as long as they had something to show that they were there because they're an employee of the town.
We have these free, and I forget what color permits they are, but I think the deputy clerk said there's been none required to date for that area.
I don't know, I, I believe if you sold a spot, you better damn well have a spot, but.
Trustee Scott, I'm just trying to understand what you were saying. If we have sixty people on the waiting list, let's say, if it were me and I wanted to be on the waiting list, why wouldn't I be using the meter parking until I can get closer? Is that what you're?
My question is, is that even if we, if we've oversold.
Yeah.
Evidently we have.
Yeah.
But for a year, I did that survey and for a year, it was an average of sixty and sometimes it went down to forty and sometimes it went up to eighty. Empty spots that are never used.
Those are the meters.
No, non-meters.
Oh, the non-meters.
Non-meters. The meters, the meters, you use five or four or five or six.
Okay.
The rest of that sits empty down there also.
That's what I misunderstood.
Matter of fact, we took ten, what do we, how many meters do we take out down there? We took a whole section of meters out to increase the parking down there.
That's why I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
So you're, you're talking about like between Park and maybe Washington, that part of the commuter parking is not being utilized.
Absolutely, and hasn't been for years.
But what's really strange when you say you have a waiting list because that's first come, first served. So I would have paid my seventy-five bucks and tried to get there early and get up closer. It's not that they have to, they're not assigned that they have to be down there. That was first come, first served. So why do we have a waiting list? Those people should be fighting those spots.
If they're going to drive to come there, then they would be parking wherever they found a spot, whether it's down in the end or one under the other.
I, I don't understand why there's even a waiting list because there's no guarantee on that waiting list that they're going to be parked up closer to the station. They could still end up being way down there. So I, I can't understand this waiting list thing if we have available spots.
We already oversold them, Pat. I, I, we can't.
Okay, I get you, so they're, even though they're vacant.
Even though they're not being used, they're sold.
Mm-hmm. And, and so are those first fifteen lots. They're sold until the one year is up. I don't believe, you know, we can, we cannot sell, we can say on the next renewal, we're going to cut down how many we're going to give. But those are sold.
Change it.
Do they show up or not?
Change it, change it, Pat. And if it's a problem, we'll go back and revisit it. I mean, for not being used, let's just try it.
I don't believe in waiting for complaints, I believe, and, you know, satisfying and just saying, I, I won't sell so many next time.
Well, if you're going to reduce them, I guess the question is, how much? Do you want to reduce it to five, which is the maximum number that's been used to date? Or do you want to go over that a little bit to be safe?
It's on Quincy, it's on Burlington.
It's on Burlington.
Yes.
Five has been a.
I mean, how, how hard would it be to, since we have only twenty-one people that have even purchased the permits, how hard would it be to just send them each a letter and say, effective such and such a day, you know, the gazillion spaces we have down there that aren't being used, we're going to reduce it to five because it's not being used? And just kind of let them know?
You could postpone this to the next set of meetings, get a letter off, that'd be very easy to let them know.
You know, and then we could pursue selling some of those other spots and first come, first served. I mean, maybe we could, this could be a win all the way around.
Well, either that or here's your other option. You have twenty-one people and they've spent this amount of money, we've exerted a lot of time and effort into this particular project due to God knows what, and I know I'm probably going to get beat up for this one, but I'll say it anyway, refund them their money, wipe it out and let them figure out where they're going to park. I mean, we went to a lot of effort to put this thing together.
Well, I don't think we should penalize them.
And it seems like, well, yeah, but my question is still this. How many spaces are over by the, behind the Harrelson's Garage area? How many spaces are over there?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Now, you have twenty-one people who have purchased permits, okay? Now, you've got twelve spaces over there. Let's say they're all filled. These aren't being used and on the other side, maybe two are being used. Where are the other ones parking? In the Cass and Burlington lot next to Amber.
Well, then we need to start ticketing is what we need to do. I mean, if that's a fact, as we're writing, you know, I mean, you guys all said you have seen them, you know, have you called the police and said, I see this car with this and this? I mean, we need to.
And there's not twelve parked behind Harrelson's.
There's not twelve parked behind Harrelson's. So it's like, I mean, we're, I, I think, I think we're arguing a point here, which is, which is rather, whatever, I mean, we can postpone this till the next meeting.
Please.
That's fine.
This is like.
Whatever, I mean, it's, it's like.
It makes sense to postpone it because if we aggressively enforce it, then we'll find out how.
You're going to find out where it is.
Where we really are.
You're going to find out where they are.
Okay, that's, that's really good, but remember what we aggressively enforcing is very difficult with the, so we're coming up, police down personnel, that's not a priority.
Trustee Fleming.
Hey. If the permit's hanging, if the permit's hanging in the window, that's pretty easy.
We can postpone, I like your suggestion. You send everybody a letter, you tell them the facts. The facts are?
It's not being used.
It's not being used, the board is considering to reducing the lot, the number on Burlington from seventeen to five or seventeen to eight. If you have any questions, this is what we're talking about at the board meeting, please attend.
I think we're making it too hard.
Yeah, I mean, I think this letter to the, to those that have purchased the permit and, and we can still enforce the other, but I think, like you said, Trustee Fleming, if you go down the list.
If you just send them to these businesses.
Yeah, you're not going to be parking at this.
Yeah, just send one to each business.
Send it to these, send it to these businesses and say, here you go.
There you go, and if they, you know, and then they can discuss and they could, maybe they can explain how they're doing it, you know? They have a question, they can say, hey, well, I'm parking here because, whatever. Because we're just speculating right now. What about West Quincy? How does it, what are we going to do with that? Are we going to, we're going to change that also?
I think we should bring that down too. There's only one, one thing being used. Yeah, may as well.
So this will apply to both West Quincy and West Burlington?
I guess why not?
Anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll postpone this item till the next meeting. Moving right along, proclamation, board to consider motion approving a proclamation declaring the week of May ninth through May fifteenth as National Police Week in Westmont and Saturday, May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, excuse me, in Westmont. I would like to read that proclamation. Proclamation declaring the week of May nine to fifteen, two thousand and ten, as National Police Week and May fifteen, two thousand and ten, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the Village of Westmont. Whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving all the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Westmont Police Department, and whereas some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately sixteen thousand injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-two, nearly nineteen thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate, ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas three hundred and twenty-four new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial this spring, including a hundred and sixteen officers killed in two thousand and nine and two hundred and eight officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's Twenty-Second Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Thursday, May thirteenth. And whereas the candlelight vigil, was it vigil or vigil? Is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year starting May nine through May fifteenth. And whereas May fifteenth is designated, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, William Ron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Westmont, do proclaim May nine through May fifteenth as Police Week in the Village of Westmont. And we publicly salute the service of the men and women of the Westmont Police Department and those law enforcement officers protecting, protecting us in all the communities across this great nation. I notice our police chief has a vest of some sort on. I'm not sure if some emergency activity is going to occur at this time.
He's prepared.
What if the parking spaces flood?
He's ready.
If there's flood, the mayor, thank you for the proclamation, thank you very much. In light of our recent water rescue, I know it was talked at the recent budget meetings and the trustees had requested that in very quick order, we get vests for our officers. We just today purchased fourteen vests, each marked squad car will now have a flotation device available to the officers in the case of any water rescues in the future.
It's really good.
And that's what this is for, bright yellow to assist us. And we're also, each officer will receive training in the use of the vest as also as water rescue from the Westmont Fire Department personnel. So I thank you for the proclamation and just want to let everyone know that.
Were those purchased through a grant from the Westmont Fire Department by any chance?
No, sir. We, we did, we went, they're basically, we went on sale, their Bass Pro Shop was having a clearance. And they were, we got these for approximately twenty dollars per vest for officers. They are after large, they're Coast Guard related, or rated. And so we are going to mount these in a trunk of each car along with our throw ropes for any water rescues in the future.
Okay, very good.
They come with a free fly rod or rod and reel or what?
Did you use your Brass Pro Points Card? Because you get, you know.
No and no.
Stuff.
Sorry, I'm not a fisherman heart.
Thank you for being proactive due to that accident.
And thank the board, I mean, permission, I mean, to buy this, it was at the board's recommendation and also authority to go get this and we want to get this sooner than later, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one, the email he sent me included pink flowers, but he told me about the.
Moving right along, next is a proclamation, board to consider proclamation honoring Westmont Public Works and declaring the week of May sixteenth, two thousand and ten, as National Public Works Week. And the proclamation reads as follows. Proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collections. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qual, of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now therefore, I, William Ron, Mayor Westmont, do proclaim the week of May sixteenth as National Public Works Week. In, in the Village of Westmont, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. And we all agree with that statement one hundred and ten percent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members regarding these proclamations? Thank you. Intergovernmental agreement, board to consider an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for the transfer of property and maintenance responsibility for drainage system components. Steve May, Director of Public Works, please.
Thank you. Mayor, this is a very well-reviewed topic. This is the final step in the, in the reorganization following the dissolution of the Westmont Surface Water Protection District. The first step where all asset, well, all assets and liabilities were first transferred to DuPage County. And since there are multiple communities affected or within the, within the limits of what used to be the Surface Water Protection District, the assets will be, and liabilities will be distributed accordingly to match the corporate boundaries. So the Village of Downers Grove is affected, the Village of Westmont and then DuPage County. So this is an intergovernmental agreement now between the village, well, the village, the Village of Downers Grove and DuPage County to take the portions of the district-owned properties that are in the corporate limits of the Village of Westmont. For us specifically, it's the three detention basins, one being Thirty-Ninth and Adams, the other at Fortyth and Lincoln, and one on North Park just south of Bogdan Avenue. They are all dry detention basins and we will be the owners of those facilities after this agreement's executed. There is a copy, it's actually an exhibit to the agreement, but you can also see the original agreement that was executed between the county and the district prior to this
Questions, board members? Thank you, Steve. Next item, construction and state highway. Board to consider resolution supporting a resolution for construction on a state-maintained
Mayor, by executing this resolution, it allows Westmont Public Works and specifically the Water Division to do maintenance on a state highway without going through the, the formal permit process, which would include the permit application and permit bonding and everything that, all the, the time-consuming paperwork that goes with applying for permits on a state highway. The, for our purposes, it would be related to water main breaks and other types of emergency repairs that we need to act on immediately. So by passing this resolution, it foregoes any bonding requirements and it allows the municipality to make its repairs and, and just contact IDOT accordingly after the fact. Our responsibilities are the same, we have to restore it to, you know, better or, you know, equivalent or better condition. This is a two-year agreement that will allow us to do that.
Thank you. Next item, declaration of village property as surplus. Board to consider declaring certain vehicles formerly in village service as surplus village property. These items will be disposed of by auction administered by DuPage Mayor's and Managers' Conference on June twelfth, two thousand and ten. I believe they do that fair rounds in Wheaton?
They move it around.
That is the location this time, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct, okay.
But they do it in different locations.
Any questions? Next item, fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget. The board will review the proposed fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget document and consider resolution adopting the draft fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget. Lisa von Bogut, our finance director, please.
Thank you, Mayor Ron. Trustees, we're having a little problem with the overhead or the projection, I was going to be doing a PowerPoint, so I'm going to use the overheads instead to be doing the presentation. So we do have those here, making a quick change, going, going old school with the overheads. First of all, thank you all very much for, for the opportunity here to present the budget for fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. It's been a long process, lots of meetings and discussions. The budget process customarily takes six months and this has taken every bit of it. It's been a lot of hard work from the staff level and from the department heads and of course, from the board and the mayor and the clerk and the village manager. So it's a collaborative effort, so I stand here today just to present what all the hard work has culminated in, and what we have this evening for your consideration. First of all, I'd like to do just a general overview of a couple of things, what we refer to as our fund summary sheets. We have an overview of what this budget contains. In terms of general fund revenues, we currently stand at eighteen million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars for our general fund expenses. We are at eighteen million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars with a general fund net deficit of seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Included in those figures, we do have the gasoline tax of two point five cents per gallon that still needs to be considered, which we estimate will generate during the fiscal year approximately four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And we also have additional reductions that we are currently working on and have been given instruction to pursue to reduce the budget another eight hundred, one hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So those two items are included in the figures that are related up here. The total revenue for the village, for all of the funds, currently stands at twenty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars with total expenses totaling thirty-two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars with a net deficit of two million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-five dollars. As I always mention in the budget workshops, although you see expenses in excess of revenue, that does not take into consideration funds that we currently have that we call funds carried forward, which the majority of this deficit comes in our capital projects funds where we have received funds in a prior fiscal year and now are expensing, or we are expensing this year and will be reimbursed. So this is essentially, this is not overspending in terms of our cash flow or our total cash available. This is merely this year what we project will be spent and received. When we look at our actual operating budgeted revenues and expenses, and this includes our major operating funds, which are, which are the general fund, convention and tourism and our IMRF social security fund, you can see we, for, from nineteen ninety-nine through to this current fiscal year upcoming budget, you can see the trend line of revenues in green and our expenses in red. So you can see that the green line is above our red line here for our total revenues versus expenditures. Excuse me. The majority of this comes into play with our, with our property tax for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund and our property tax for Police Pension Fund as well, which I will explain as we go on. Our cash reserve balances for fiscal years two thousand through two thousand and eleven, as you can see, eleven years ago, we were just over six million dollars in terms of cash reserves. We have been spending down those cash reserves and offsetting our budget. We have been spending down those cash reserves and offsetting our budget. And as you can see, in two thousand and eleven, we do project that we will be at approximately one point six million. That's just a little bit below where we were the last several fiscal years, but not the sharp declines that we saw in prior years, where we were using the cash reserves to offset our budget revenue shortfalls. In terms of a expense comparison from fiscal year two thousand and five, two thousand and six, all the way to the upcoming budget year, our budgeted expenses are thirty-one million, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which is less than, just about one-tenth of a percent higher than we budgeted for the last fiscal year. So, holding the line on expenses and making a lot of reductions, we're showing that very little change in the overall budget for the upcoming year. There were a lot of preliminary cuts that were included in the budget that was proposed for the board's consideration. I went through these at the budget workshops, and we've talked about all of these items. There were drastic reductions in dues and subscriptions, and conferences, and training. We also reduced some professional services and postponed some replacement items. So, there's an entire list here of all the things that we had considered and included in the budget, and these did, these budget, these cuts remained in the budget. There were then items for consideration that we offered for the board that were still included in the budget, but wanted the board to review and consider either making some sort of changes to, reductions, eliminations, or modifications to the programs. These items, once again, were all reviewed by the board, and we came up with the actual items that were, board decisions were made upon, which included combining the board meetings, reducing our chamber external funding, eliminating the Christmas wreaths, and the tree replacement program. We did an elimination of general IT contract work, reduced supplies for budget binders, building and maintenance, reduced even more significantly than was originally proposed, education, or conferences and training, and dues and subscriptions, reduced more maintenance and building improvements, new equipment requests, and eliminated a market adjustment. The personnel assumptions that are included in the budget include maintaining eight full-time vacancies, one administrative assistant in public works, four sworn police officers, and three telecommunicator positions. It also maintains our part-time vacancies of one mechanics helper in public works, two maintenance workers for public works street, six seasonal public works streets employees, and two seasonal public works water employees. Additional assumptions in personnel included no general wage adjustments for non-union employees, the union represented telecommunications, or the union represented police officers. The police officer's contract is still under, is under negotiation, so we have the budget currently in there at zero, knowing that any percent increase that would be, would be agreed upon or negotiated would increase the budget numbers for the year. Employee insurance contributions for the non-union employees, we have two programs, an HMO and a PPO, that have contributions associated with them. The non-union employees, HMO was at seven percent, and eight percent for the PPO. The union represented telecommunications were at nine percent for HMO, and eleven percent for the PPO. And the union represented police officers were at eight percent for HMO, and ten percent for PPO, which, once again, that is under negotiation. So, if that were to change, we would see changes in the bottom line of the budget for that. But that is what the rate was for the current fiscal year, so it remained in there. For revenue, the overall budgeted revenues for the fiscal year, as I mentioned, are twenty-eight million, six fifty-seven, six eighty-five. This is a two percent decrease from the current fiscal year of twenty-nine million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. It does include increases in ambulance fees of a hundred and eighty thousand, and police pension property taxes of seven hundred thousand, as well as the gasoline tax proposal of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Knowing that the police pension property tax of seven hundred thousand is levied on behalf of the Police Pension Fund, and all of that has to go to pay directly into the Pension Fund for funding. You can see the history of our actual revenue comparisons from fiscal year two thousand and five, two thousand and six, all the way through two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and then our budgeted revenue for fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, indicating the two percent decrease from last year's budgeted. Our village-wide revenue sources is broken down here. You can see our sales and use tax is budgeted this year at about seven million, four hundred and fifty thousand. That's twenty-eight percent of the village-wide revenue. Our water sales are at three point eight million, which is fourteen percent. Utility tax is two million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, which is ten percent. And our property taxes are five million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety, which is twenty percent. The rest of all of the other revenue sources are comprised here, which includes hotel motel tax, garbage collection, grants and contributions, motor fuel, state income tax, miscellaneous taxes, and those are all in here, as well as permits, fees, and licenses. Our major revenue source, as I just mentioned, is our sales tax, which from last fiscal year is down eight percent, about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. We are projecting an overall sales tax revenue shortfall of four hundred thousand dollars for the current fiscal year, which is six percent. This line chart illustrates where our monthly receipts have been for the past four fiscal years. The two thousand and six, two thousand and seven fiscal year in green, two thousand and seven, eight in red, last fiscal year, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and then the current fiscal year that we are in, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, in orange. So, you can see our revenues have been under where we have been for all the three prior fiscal years. We did go up a little bit and exceed last year's figures during November and December, and then in January, we plummeted again down below where we have been for the past four fiscal years. This is, in, in comparison to what our surrounding communities are seeing, exactly the same trends. So, it's a, a result of where we are locally and nationally with the economy. For general fund revenue, some of our other revenue, there is a one point four percent decrease from the current fiscal year, which is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. We see that eight percent decrease in sales tax of five hundred thousand dollars for next fiscal year. We have a fourteen percent decrease in incomes tax of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, a twenty-seven percent decrease in hotel motel taxes of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and a fifteen percent decrease in utility taxes of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We did, as I mentioned before, have three additional revenue sources that are included in the budget, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for ambulance fees, the gasoline tax of four twenty-seven, five hundred, which still needs to be approved, and the police pension property tax increase of seven hundred thousand. Property taxes, as I've mentioned, we have an increase in here that's been historic. As we can see, from two thousand all the way through two thousand and eight, we were static and declining with our revenue, with our overall tax rate for the villages portion. The large increase that you see this year is a direct result of the increase in the Police Pension Fund property tax levy, in order to get our contributions back up to a closer level to the hundred percent actuarial required contribution for the Pension Fund. This chart illustrates the individual fund tax rates, where you can see, the orange line is the Police Pension Fund, so you can see there's where the drastic increase is. The rest of them are remaining very flat, and we have a little bit of an increase in the IMRF Social Security, which was in anticipation of the fact that we expected to see a large increase in our employer contribution for IMRF due to losses in the, the fund from the market. And fortunately, we did not see as large an increase as we had anticipated, so that is a good thing. Our general fund expenses by division and department, can see comparison from the current fiscal year. In general administration, there was a one point eight percent decrease of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. In commissions, we saw a thirteen point nine percent increase of six thousand dollars, which takes into account testing that needs to be done for new officers. The Police Department saw a one point eight percent decrease of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. The Fire Department, three point one percent decrease of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. The Public Works Department, negative five point four percent for two hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. And then, we have additional reductions of eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty that were done after all of this, for a total of three point three percent decrease in the general fund, six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. As I had mentioned, one of the major increases are, that we saw, or changes have to do with the Police Pension Fund. Our total contributions for the upcoming fiscal year are one million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. This is a ninety-three point eight percent increase from the current fiscal year, the seven hundred thousand, we have six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety, to be exact, but the seven hundred thousand that I've referenced on the property tax side. The property tax contribution is one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then, we also have a supplemental sales tax contribution of ninety thousand that continues to take into, of fact, that we have some arrears that are due to not levying the property tax at the full actuarial required contribution. So, that should take into consideration, taking care of that. Here is the graph that shows the actuarial required contribution. The pink line here shows the overall funding for the Police Pension Fund, and the blue line shows the percentage that the village has contributed of the actuarial required contribution. As you can see, it went up in two thousand and five to fifty-nine, went down again in the fifties, and now, with the new increase this year, where it will be at eighty-four point seven percent, the highest we've been since long before two thousand. That's the major overview of what's in the budget. There's a lot, many pages, and a lot of work and numbers in there. So, were there any questions about anything?
Police pension property tax levy, is that in place as of last year, affecting last year's taxes payable in this year? Or is it prospective where it won't take effect until next year's tax bills come out?
It, it was levied for the two thousand and nine tax year, which is the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven receipts. So, that has not been seen by the taxpayers at that point in time. It's for this upcoming year that we're currently in. So, for June bill, for this.
It will reflect in their June and September.
September, yeah, yes, exactly.
So, we'll see revenues.
Correct, right. It was the levy that was passed last year, two thousand and nine, for this year's receipts. Correct.
They're saying, people are saying that there's an increase in the economy, as things are starting to improve. Do you see in the sales tax revenue, or any other revenue that the village has received, or, I don't know how often, every quarter, we get sales tax receipts? Is there any indication that you've seen in terms of funds that increased, funds for the village, from any source?
We have not seen the types of increases that we would like to be seeing. The, when we look at the revenues, this is sales tax, and we do get our receipts monthly. We were cautiously optimistic during October, November, and December, where we were seeing hitting the levels of last year. However, the large decrease in January that was experienced really kind of makes us a little hesitant to, to be optimistic about that. You know, two or three months really, to us, doesn't constitute a trend or a recovery. And although, you know, you hear about the economy hopefully being on the rise, it's not going to come back sharply. It's going to take a long time, and if it is going to grow, it's going to be very gradual. So, it's going to take a while for us to get out of there and get anywhere near even where we were last year or the year before.
Ron, did you want to add anything?
Just that we were optimistic more than a month ago, that we saw the, the sales tax looks like it was at least stabilizing and maybe increasing a little bit. And as Lisa said, you know, we're no different than our neighboring communities. I was talking to a manager in a community just west of here, and he brought the subject up. He was at a meeting recently with some other managers, mayors, and they were all saying the same thing, that they all saw this huge drop last month. And this particular community, he said it was historic in their community. They had never seen that kind of a percentage drop in their sales tax in one month. So, not sure what that means. Nationally, we are hearing some positive things. You know, anecdotally, I hear things about maybe the real estate market's getting a little bit better. But, you know, we all, the revenues always lag on, on stuff like that, so.
Correct.
Still being very conservative at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Where are we as far as getting this two and a half cent tax implemented? Because that's a very crucial part of this budget.
It is our intent to have it on the next agenda. I've already talked to the village attorney, and I believe you're working on the ordinance?
The board action request and the ordinance are prepared. As a matter of fact, this was emailed from Anne Marie, who worked on it this afternoon, so.
They're being reviewed by the Finance Department. We do have the documents.
And we've been in conversation with the Illinois Municipal League to try to learn, you know, what other communities had, had in terms of experience in implementing this. Based on that information, we believe we'll start, assuming we follow the timeline we've outlined, we'll be able to start to see the revenue coming in by, conservatively, by July first, I think, is what we're.
Good.
Okay.
Any other?
That's a big portion of this.
Sure.
And our projections did take into consideration the fact that we did not anticipate having twelve months of revenue, so. But we do need to continue to move along in the process, as Ron said.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all of your assistance and all the, all the department heads and the departments in working, putting this budget together on these very, very tight economic times. Thank you. Next item, Finance Ordinance Number Twenty-Five.
Waive the reading.
Request to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Comments on the purchase orders? There are no comments? Right along, unless there's something else to come before the board. I entertain a motion to go into executive session as requested by the manager regarding personnel.
Second.
Go call.
Trustee, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Glebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Sinica.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now adjourned to executive session.